Council, at your position tonight, you have a package from the First Presbyterian Church Faith Explorers, and there's a card coming around. I think it's starting on down there about bills. First item on agenda is a special presentation, and I'm gonna ask Judy to meet me at the front. You wanna bring Mike with you? You're welcome to do so.
Look how rested she looks.
I know, right?
I know where she's been getting that rest, too.
Judy Redwine is retiring tonight after 50 years. So you can imagine, over 50 years, she's served in a variety of positions. She started out as a clerk, then as a secretary, and then moved into utilities as a secretary, administrative assistant, utility services coordinator, and then assistant director of public utilities. On four different occasions, she served as the interim director of public utilities, until finally, she decided she would take the director of public utilities. And that is the position she is retiring from. Judy, 50 years is hard to even believe, but we want to thank you for all that you've done for the city. And it's hard for me to believe that you're leaving. I've known you almost my entire life. So thank you very much for what you've done. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Junie A. Redwine, who on January the 1st, 2022, retired from employment with the City of Albemarle after 50 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Judy, thank you so much.
That does deserve a speech. That does deserve a speech.
Well, I have asked her, and she refuses. As always, Judy doesn't like to talk. She just likes to be a doer. She gets the job done without talking. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Mike, too.
It's official. I love the way she said that.
Next item is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the minutes from the January 26, 2022 Strategic Planning Session, the January 27, 2022 Stormwater Management Plan Session, and the February 7, 2022 Regular and Closed Meetings. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a series of public hearings. The first will be on Resolution 2206 to Consider the Albemarle Redistricting Plan. Mr. Ferris?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the public hearing for our redistricting plan. At the last meeting, the city council considered and decided to move forward with a scenario that has been advertised and is in the agenda package. We've been discussing redistricting now for several months. I had several presentations, so I won't go into all the details that we have in the past. But following the 2020 census, we were required to study our electoral districts for population balance. And we did that and found three of the four districts to be out of balance from the ideal plus or minus 5% population. Then a process was undertaken to review the potential options. Council selected the scenario that is in the agenda package, and the public hearing's been advertised. The district does meet all the requirements of the ideal population, which is plus around 5%. The settlement agreement that the city has in place, and then several, if not all, of the criteria that city council established when going into the redistricting process. Fairly common sense items such as keeping the districts as compact as possible, following natural boundaries and features, trying to minimize the change to the least extent possible, and so forth. So, Mayor, that's just a high-level review of the redistricting option and plan. And I'd like to answer any questions for council in public.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
May the public hearing be quiet?
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the hearing. Close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Move the approval of Resolution 2206.
Motion to approve Resolution 2206 by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is number five, is ordinance 2215 Laurel Street Right-of-Way Abandonment. We have received a petition for that. Mr. Ferris, you want to cover that?
I don't think there's a whole lot to cover, other than we did receive the petition. It has been advertised, and this is the public hearing to consider whether or not to move forward with the right-of-way abandonment. It is an unopened, unaccepted right-of-way at this point, and it does not serve much, it does not serve any city purpose, nor is there any utilities in this unopened right-of-way.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Move approval of ordinance 2215. Motion by Councilmember Dry to approve ordinance 2215. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number six, ordinance 2216 is to consider text amendments to Section 92008 for vacation rental homes. And I'm gonna ask staff to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a privately requested application for text amendments to the zoning ordinance. This is requested by Ms. Carla Cunningham, who owns 1035 PD Avenue. There were, she was operating a Airbnb there. There were a number of aspects of the Airbnb she was operating that were not in compliance with our home stay ordinance as it is defined. Originally, she had requested that the home stay ordinance be increased from the 30 days per calendar year up to 150 days per calendar year. Staff has had some other discussions with other property owners who would like to see that increased. It is something that we had been considering for a while. However, we were concerned there was other aspects that still were not going to be covered. And since she was applying for this, we figured we would go ahead and try to propose something that would actually meet her needs. The ordinance that you have now is, and I'll go ahead and open it up here. This ordinance was presented to, is one of two options. It was presented to Planning Board, and she actually, Ms. Cunningham, actually agreed with this option. To go with option two, she felt it would be more flexible for her at the time. And effectively, what it does is, let me get to it. We are going to make, recommend a change from, instead of 150, but change to 30 days to 90 days total for the home stay. I feel this is in keeping with what's been asked by several people, and shouldn't be too much of an effect on the neighborhoods. And then also, more specifically, to Ms. Cunningham's property and to some of these whole-home kind of vacation rentals that are offered on Airbnb. We're creating a new definition for that, and I'll just go ahead and read it. Any private residential unit that is rented in whole or in part on a short-term transient basis that exceeds the home stay criteria for guests, rooms, total use per calendar year, or residency requirement for the owner. Off-street parking should be provided for all guests. These are commonly associated with Airbnb and other online rental listings. The use needs to be permissible in any legal residential dwelling with approval of a special use permit by city council, which is not something we were previously doing with the home stays, and may require approval of additional permits and/or registration prior to commencing said use as deemed necessary by the city manager and applicable city codes. This refers to what was previously approved to start a registry for these types of uses. So that would follow approval of a special use permit by city council. Also in there would be periodically updated information, including but not limited to website listings, rental methods, current inspections. Those may be required as part of the Registration Permit Program. Failure to meet requirements of Registration Permit Program, multiple citations, and violation of city or county ordinance or police document, and criminal activity will necessitate revocation of any approved special use permit and will require reapplication to city council. And in addition, I think it, I should put it on there somewhere. And also, these, we also have a distance requirement, separation requirement on these as well, of one-half mile from each other. So idea being that these would blend into the neighborhood, would not be considered nuisances to the neighbors. And we have some, we definitely have some criteria in there to help ensure that, and then also to prevent any one neighborhood from ending up getting a whole bunch of these in there.
Did you say we would be implementing a registry of these particular?
I think so. Yeah, I think so. After the special use permits granted by city council, I would recommend that we do keep a registry for these, and probably on an annual, biannual basis. You know, possibly do inspections and such on them to make sure they're still in compliance.
And, Mayor, and just like our bed and breakfast, they have to do the sign-in and for the 90 days, calculate those kinds of days. Is that right?
How long has she been operating?
I don't believe she's actually operating right now. She had been operating for, I think, probably about six or seven months. And some of what she had there was kind of in compliance. There was a guest house there that she was renting out. But she did indicate the desire to do some other rooms inside the house. So that's starting to get kind of above what you would consider a home stay. Then also, it was probably well over the 30-day maximum allowance just in that six or seven months that she was operating it. And then you also have the fact that this is more of a vacation home for her. They do come, and they do keep an eye on the property, but it's not something where they would be there necessarily all the time.
Funny is, I knew something was going on there because of some of the neighbors that said something to me. So, is she here tonight?
No, I thought she was going to be, but she's not.
Questions, Council? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Move to close the public hearing. Second. Motion by Councilmember Dry to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve ordinance 2216.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes to approve ordinance 2216. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion?
I assume that's with the staff recommendations of the 90 days, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
If I could just specify, real quick before we do that, I want to specify, we changed the 90 days for the home stay. This would be more of a, and the reason it's going before council was this would be more of a full-time use for these.
Right, right, correct. Yes.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number seven, again, another public hearing, ordinance 2217 to Consider Text Amendments to Section 92124 Concerning Curb Cuts and Vehicular Assets. Again, I'll ask staff to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have now is a new section that we're proposing to add into, we have a kind of a sub, a development subsection that's growing in our zoning ordinance right now. Eventually, we would like this to become an actual chapter in the document itself. But for right now, we're proposing to add a new section to that, 92.124. And this is really to address some streetscape issues that staff has found with some of the new housing types that we're trying to encourage and trying to see more of in the city from those 2020 amendments. Its primary focus is on preserving the streetscape and the kind of the public sphere of the right-of-way. Pedestrian safety, walkability, vehicle safety, vegetation, and on-street parking availability. And that is proposed to be done by regulating curb cuts. Here's some examples of some different types of townhomes that you have. We also have some very tight, single-family homes that are being developed now as well on much smaller lots. And you can see how some of these, they vary wildly. Right now, all of these are allowed. But you can see the effect they would have on the streetscape, the sidewalk, plantings, being able to pull an emergency vehicle or even a visitor up onto the street right there. What is proposed, and this is for residential development, curb cuts need to be 20 feet from intersections and need to be 18 feet clear behind the curb in order for those to be approved and installed. So you can actually get a vehicle in there. Max single residential curb cut would be 18 feet wide. Curb cuts on a single lot, if you have more than one curb cut, would be 30 feet in between. The total curb cut widths per lot of 24 feet cumulative, or 50%, whichever is less, and there are some exceptions for that as well. Then we get into some of the smaller lots. Lots less than 45 feet in width will have side-by-side or continuous curb cuts. This does not apply to alleys, private drives, commercial or residential shared parking lots. This is, these are curb cuts for single drives for specific units. Also with this is wood exempt existing curb cuts, large single-family lots with over 200 feet of road frontage, and in some extreme cases, narrow or detached in townhome lots where you may have some severe topography issues and other items. This is in the ordinance. It may not have gone into your document, but we have it in the official ordinance to be signed. This is a diagram, and this actually, the lettering in there coincides with each one of the sections that are spelled out. You can see kind of a large lot here with over 200 feet of frontage, well over that. They could have another curb cut back here if they wanted to. This one right here has 18 feet, but if they needed another eight feet over here or something, if they wanted to narrow this down, they could have an additional curb cut on this. This one right here, some of the smaller lots, we have 45 feet. This shows some different options that you could have with sharing, not sharing, but adjoining the driveways, the curb cuts right there. So you have a longer continuous curb along the street. And then on the townhomes here as well. So what it does, it ensures that curb cuts not yep over half of our right-of-way, and it's safer for pedestrian and vehicles. It spaces out the cuts to allow for rights-of-way to still be used for things like on-street parking, deliveries, emergency vehicles, visitors, et cetera. It's overall, it's more efficient. Cuts down a potential stormwater runoff in the right-of-way, preserves areas for landscaping and shade trees, et cetera. What it does not do, it does not dictate residential design. The homes can still have as much off-street parking as they wish. They can put the garages where they wish. All this does is control at the sidewalk or at the property line how much of that, how much access you have to the street right there. And it does not substantially impact existing development with driveways. Show you some of the different examples here. This is currently in the ordinance. These are kind of double curb cuts with a double garage going up to these townhomes. You can see there's very little spacing in between here for sidewalks, street trees. You could not park a vehicle along here or anything like that if you needed to. Almost one continuous curb cut with townhomes, and it's also very significant with cluster detached homes as well when they want to do a double, a double-wide cut there. It's very suburban. It's almost apartment-like complex kind of design, and it may work well in those situations, but on public streets, not so much. It can be unwelcoming and unsafe for pedestrians and drivers. You could also not get quite as many trees in here. In this specific example, you might be able to get four or five small shrubs, no parking. Another example here, this would be a single wide drive. Smaller, even-spaced cuts. It's still kind of suburban, but it addresses the street marginally better. It's a little bit safer for pedestrians and drivers. You could get, you know, a few trees in there still. You could also get a handful of on-street parking spaces as we kind of tried to show right here. There would be a little bit of room for some of those. Jumping ahead a little bit in our ordinance, the R4 District. This is really what it's designed for, and this would be for parking to be in the rear. No curb cuts, multiple options for off-street alley parking spaces, alley garages, et cetera. This could be done in any of these examples right now, but we're just showing one of them right here. This is more what this district is designed for. Very urban. It's required only in our R4 District right now. It would be an option in others. It is pedestrian-oriented. It's safer for drivers as well. And you also maintain a continuous curb along the street there where you can have large canopy trees, and you could have probably 18-plus on-street parking spaces there as well. What is proposed is kind of a compromise between that with side-by-side curb cuts. This pairs curb cuts to maximize curb distances at the street while also allowing front-loaded drives. We do know that, you know, in a lot of cases, people are still going to want to have the front-loaded drives. In some cases, they work better, or they work with a specific model of house. Not really, you know, quite urban, but it is much more in keeping with the older residential development we have in Albemarle, where we have some shared driveways, or they're adjacent to each other. This would, you would have 20-plus-foot spaces for pedestrian refuge between parking. So it wouldn't be every, you know, every 10 feet or so, you wouldn't have another vehicle or anything like that. You'd also have still several trees. You wouldn't have quite as many on-street parking spaces, but you could have 11-plus spaces there for smaller vehicles.
Questions, Council? Personally, I like it, Kevin. I think it helps the situation we discussed before. And it would address some of those concerns. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Move to approve ordinance 2217. Motion by Councilmember Dry to approve ordinance 2217. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Good job.
It's gonna be nice. Very nice.
Council on Agenda Adjustments, I have one addition that we need to add to the end of the agenda right before the closed session. We have a request from Kendall Church for a utility adjustment.
Legal proof?
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Have no unannounced delegations?
I haven't. Before we go any further, I do have an agenda adjustment.
Okay.
To add to closed session 143318, 11, Section 3, to consult with an attorney.
A motion by Councilmember Hall to add a consult with attorney to the closed session.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Have no unannounced delegations? Administrative reports or departmental monthly reports are in your agenda? Anyone have any questions?
I did have one question on that. I was looking at the applications for senior planner. It looks like we had, we've had zero applicants. Is that correct? I think it closes later this week. We do. Okay, okay, perfect.
I have a couple. And is Keith here tonight, Michael?
He is not. We have a couple of folks that aren't able to attend this evening.
Okay, well, some of them have to do with, I'm gonna run through them if that's okay, Mayor. Under EDC, still not having dates when things are being done. Most everybody else seems to put dates on things as they're being done or noted. And I know that there was a meeting with Retail Strategies downtown, a follow-up meeting that was supposed to have been held a couple of weeks ago, and that got postponed because of some personal stuff that was going on. And there's a note in here that they're hoping to do it, but we don't have a date yet. Just trying to figure out when that's gonna be so that folks will have enough time ahead of time to get there and to plan for that. And then, going over to, I see we, I've been seeing, Safari, I saw him walk ago. Is he out there somewhere?
He's in the back.
Okay, I see him now. He's, I see him way back there. Our trainees are already on, they're onboarded. We're paying them as they go through class, right? Okay, so I've been seeing those guys up at the Y doing their exercises and stuff, but that we do have four of those, it looks like, right now that we do have. And is that a 12-week? How many weeks is that? So if that's 16, 23, six months, when will they be ready to come on? Okay, very good. And I see that we have hired a risk manager. Is that right? And I'm, I'm seeing what's written in front of me.
I was very excited to have a risk manager who had accepted our offer. And last week, I got an email. He rescinded. He's actually going to Florida for another opportunity.
Okay.
Got to start that search over again.
Okay, well, at least I paid attention to what's here.
I was very excited to put that on the report.
Let's see, I think there was one other, one other report that I had a question about. Actually, I think I'll hold off on that one. No, 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 I know there is one. In Public Works, and I say this because council, it's something we've got to make a decision on. Thank you, Ross, for highlighting something in your Public Works report. Page three and page four of the Public Works report. Ross says to us that the PD Avenue parking lot, phase one is done, but option two of the parking lot needs to be determined, and we need, we've got to make some determination what we want to do with that. And then he talks about the follow-up to that on the next page. So I don't want us to lose that if we, I mean, he's done what, he and his department have done what they needed to do, but it's in front of us as to what we want to do there.
I think council had what, had decided to wait until we heard from a gentleman that wants to make us a proposal before we made a decision on that. The last discussion I remember on that.
And we may have talked about that, but we may not have given that. I don't, Ross is saying, he doesn't know anything about that. So I just, I think that the communication thing, I just saw it on our monthly report. That goes to the public as well, and I'm just putting it out there. That's all.
Moving to the consent agenda. Consider road closure for the Steel Runs Car Show. And consideration to declare surplus property, you have that list in your agenda. Only question I do have, and I don't think there's anyone here to answer it. It says Second Street all the way to South Street. We typically close Second Street at King's Avenue. Is that a change for this one, Mr. Ferris? Does anyone know?
I don't know anything different than what's on the agenda package.
It's the Steel Runs, it's the car, it's the car show.
Typically, Second Street closes at King's Alley. Is it wanting to go all the way to South with this one?
Not King's Alley, King Street, the street.
Yeah.
In front of the courthouse.
It says all the way to South, and I know we typically don't do that to try to give some parking for the restaurant. Well, I'm fine if, let staff make the decision. If council's good with that. Right, that's what we typically do.
Yeah, and that would make more sense right now.
If council is good with that, just let staff make that decision.
Do you want to amend that request to do?
We'll just let.
We'll let you make the decision is what I'm asking staff, if staff's good with it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You make the decision. Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the consent agenda with that request. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving into new business, number 11. Consider a major subdivision, 2202 Eastover Downs, major revision.
Good evening, council. This one should look a little bit familiar. We have gone through and had this one approved before. The one that we approved before was just the sixteen lots that were fronting on South Bell Avenue and the two on Amherst Street. Just to get you re-oriented here, this is South Bell, this is Amherst Street, the, uh, the old bowling alley and chopping center, East Main Street, is about right over here. MJSR 22-02 is currently a thirty-four lot cluster subdivision consisting of single-family attached units. The total tract is five point two-five acres, and what is currently proposed is considered to be a revision of the original submitted plat, or otherwise known as Phase Two. The development features ample open space provided with amenities, a new street that is proposed to fully connect Eastover Avenue, and onsite parking areas for overflow. Council has previously approved Phase One, which consisted of the sixteen lots. This development is proposed to be fronting off of existing South Bell Avenue and Amherst Street. There will also be a new street that the new sixteen lots will front. As a cluster subdivision, the minimum open space is determined by the amount of area reduced from each and every lot below the normal minimum requirement as well as five percent of the gross land area. Based on the gross land area and the reduction in each and every lot, the amount of open space that is required is thirty-one thousand and sixty-eight square feet. The developer has shown the amount of open space to be a hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet with an active open space area of over eighteen thousand square feet provided with walking trails and off-street parking for residents. A townhome generates an average of seven point three eight trips per day. With thirty-eight townhomes being proposed, this would generate an average of two hundred and fifty-one trips per day. The city's threshold for requiring a traffic study is five hundred trips per day. This development will be served by city water, sewer, and electricity. Services are already located adjacent to the parcel. There is a sanitary sewer easement that bisects the rear of the property. This is proposed as existing to remain. The developer does plan to extend city water and sewer service with the construction of the new street to serve the future lots. The proposed new street will be a twenty-six-foot wide street with mountable curb and gutter and a five-foot wide sidewalk on each side of the street. Currently, the street is shown to connect all the way through to Eastover Avenue. Staff and the developer are working together on a right-of-way acquisition to make this connection possible. If this preliminary is approved and upon final plating, the developer plans to provide a two-year performance bond to guarantee that the street will be fully connected. Just to expand on that, there is a portion of property right about here that is currently owned by another property owner. In order to get that fifty-foot wide right-of-way and the new twenty-six-foot wide street, there is that small portion that we are working with the developer on acquiring. There will be a significant amount of time between this preliminary and then the final plat, which will give us the time to acquire that piece, and also do the bonding to allow it to be fully connected.
So show me that piece again.
I'll zoom on, zoom in.
I'm sorry. I've, I've got mine open, but I can't get it.
It's, uh, it should be kind of faded in here.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah, so the, the hash line here that you see is pretty much the existing property line as it is today. And as you see, it runs right through the middle of, of the future right-of-way. So what we're working on right now, basically, we have the full right-of-way up until about this point right here. And what we're working on is the acquisition of these, these small portions right here to allow for the fifty-foot wide right-of-way so that we can make the full connection to Eastover Avenue. I can let the developer speak more to this in a few moments, but we have been working together. There are some that are, that are wanting to allow that connection to be made. We are working with another property owner that, that, um, that will hopefully work with us to make that happen.
So, Mayor, so when you're saying "we"...
I mean, we, we are working diligently with the developer to, to make this happen. They're the ones that are...
The developer will have to do it. When you say "we," actually them, you're just with your help, right?
Correct.
Not "we," the city.
Right, so, right, we're working with them to, to make it work.
Gotcha. They, but, um, they're, it's their liability, they have to take, okay.
That's correct.
I, just, sorry.
Yeah, fine.
My question is, what's the assurance that the right-of-way will be obtained?
The, the assurance that we have is basically, right now, we're at the prelim. Then we're going to be getting a civil design here in the coming weeks. And then when the final plat is submitted, that makes all these lots legal, we can require a performance bond, which is basically a two-year agreement. They can post the money in that bond so that if that street is never connected, the city could then execute that bond and then build the street.
But what if we, what if we don't have a right-of-way? That's what I'm saying. What assurance do we have that the right-of-way can be obtained so the street can be built?
The city attorney, and I, we've been looking at condemnation of this if we need to. It's a, it's a very small portion. It's like, I think it's less than a thousand square feet that we need to get.
Maybe I shouldn't have asked that.
Right, yeah. It, it is an option. It's not the most desirable way to do it. We prefer the developer do it, but if it comes down to it, to complete a public street there, to get that tiny little twenty-foot section is, you know, we'll, we'll do that if we need to. We'll bring that to y'all.
Is that right-of-way part of the new houses that was built down, like, near the, I guess, uh, near West Drive?
At the end of Eastover Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that house right now, actually, the, um, the fence that's there, we've spoken with him. They, they extended that fence, even though we, it said not to. They extended that fence actually into city right-of-way right now. So that will have to be pulled back, um, when this is done.
Because that's what I was looking at, that fence, and I was trying to figure out how you're going to tie in the...
If you follow the street kind of line straight down, you can see where it comes in, probably about ten, ten, fifteen feet kind of into the, the city right-of-way right there. Well, that, that will have to come back.
Typical setbacks in R6 for townhomes are ten feet in the front, eight feet on the sides with an exterior wall, zero feet for interior walls, eighteen feet on a side with a street, and twenty-five feet in the rear. The developer has proposed to reduce the end-unit side setback to five feet, the side setback with the street to fifteen feet, and the rear setback to seventeen point five feet. This is compliant with the city's area, yard, and height requirements for cluster subdivisions. Lot sizes in R6 for townhomes are a minimum of three thousand square feet. In a clustered development, the lot sizes are able to be reduced by up to fifty percent. The smallest lot proposed is one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six square feet. The largest lot proposed is four thousand one hundred and thirty-two square feet. With the subject property being zoned as R6, the developer has proposed a type-one buffer yard adjacent to GHBD zoning. The developer has also shown existing vegetation along the western property boundary in an attempt to satisfy the type-two buffer yard requirement adjacent to R8 zoning. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this request at the February third meeting, and unanimously made a favorable recommendation to the city council to approve MJSR 2202. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, the gravel sections, one shows a temporary fire truck turnaround, and then you got the other one, basically on both sides of where the road would be. Are they going to be converted into paved permanent off, uh, off-street parking?
Uh, that, that may not happen due to the parking lot requirements. If they stay under the five thousand square foot minimum, they can leave it as a gravel parking lot. The developer could make it into a paved lot. That would be at their discretion. Or if they go over that five thousand square foot mark, it would be required to be paved and provided with landscaping.
Okay, and then with the adoption of the new curb cut ordinance, are they going to make adjustments to meet that?
So they, they will, and that would more than likely be hashed out when we receive plans for the townhomes that come in through Plan Review through the county, and as well as the civil design.
So with the developer, so not the person developing the lot, but actually the, the builder to be the ones you discussed that way?
If the, when the developer constructs a street, would, would y'all be making the curb cuts at that time? No. So that would, that would be the builder that would be making the curb cuts with the new street.
Counsel, have further questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares, no, this is not a public hearing. Excuse me, but anyone else that cares to speak, please come forward. Question, have, counsel, have any questions of the developer? Counsel, what's your wishes?
Move to approve MJRS 2202.
So the, one, one, one more question. So the only way that we could actually make this happen without that right-of-way agreement is to go to the process of eminent domain?
If the gentleman does not agree to sell it to the developer, then at some point, we would have to do eminent domain to, to make the roads connect.
Yeah, there's actually, uh, and Britt can correct me if I'm wrong on this. There's actually, there's two different, well, there's three different routes to this here. Uh, one, the developer, the owner could just sell that little portion directly to them. There's actually a private eminent domain that can, you can go through, or a developer could actually go through to get that, that right-of-way. I don't think it's utilized a lot apparently, and it takes a little bit longer. And then there's, uh, public eminent domain, which is a little bit faster, and you can actually go through and build the street while you're dealing with that. Is that correct?
Yeah, generally, that's correct. I don't know how often the private corporations go through their own eminent domain proceedings, but it doesn't allow the quick take methods that governments have where you post the complaint with the kind of appraised value and immediately can start working and work out the price later. I think in the private sector, you have to go through the entire process before you're able to build, so that's why I don't know how frequently it's used because it can be quite cumbersome. But there are options here.
Further questions? Comments?
So this is the additional, one, additional, how many?
It should be eighteen lots from the original approval.
Eighteen on the first and sixteen on the second.
Sixteen on the second.
Correct.
I was trying to count.
And a motion by Councilmember Dry to approve 2202.
Okay, I don't, did you have a second?
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No. No.
Motion carries. Six, six-two, six...
Five-two.
Five-two, excuse me. Moving to number twelve. Consider a major subdivision, 2203, for Elizabeth Towns.
All right. Just to get oriented here, uh, this will be fronting on four different streets. So we have East Main here at the front. We have Heath Street right here. We have Elizabeth Avenue that goes all the way back here. And then we have Grant Street that comes up through here. MJSR 22-03 is currently a thirty-three lot traditional townhome subdivision located along Heath Street, Elizabeth Avenue, and Grant Street. The four point four-one acre property is currently zoned residential office and is planned to remain under the current zoning district. The residential office district allows for single-family attached units by right with a minimum lot size of three thousand square feet. Primary accesses to these townhomes are on all existing streets. Six townhomes will be directly accessed off of Heath Street, near the, near the intersection of East Main Street. Twenty-two townhomes will be directly accessed off of Elizabeth Avenue, and the remaining five townhomes will be accessed off of Grant Street. As a traditional subdivision, only five percent of the gross land area to be developed must be reserved for common open space. The gross land area to be developed is four point four-one acres. Point two-two acres, or nine thousand six hundred and five square feet, is the minimum amount of open space required. The developer has proposed over twenty-eight thousand square feet of open space provided with parked benches and a walking trail that connects into existing and future sidewalks. There is currently existing city water, sewer, and electricity to serve the proposed site. However, the sanitary sewer, the sanitary sewer main stops short on Grant Street, and the developer proposes to extend the sewer main to service all new lots on Grant Street. All roads along this development are existing. Heath Street is currently a forty-foot wide right-of-way with a twenty-six-foot wide street with curb and gutter and a sidewalk on the west side of the street. Elizabeth Avenue is currently a thirty-foot wide right-of-way with a twenty-foot wide street partially curved on one side and natural ditch on the other side with no sidewalks. Grant Street is currently a twenty-five-foot wide right-of-way that is partially improved. The section of Grant Street from Ruby Street to Elizabeth Avenue is currently roughly a fourteen-foot wide gravel road. The developer plans to improve this section with a twenty-foot wide street with natural ditch, with a natural ditch section. The developer also plans to implement an on-street parking area along Grant Street between lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine. This section should serve to allow up to eight vehicles to safely park on the street. The developer has shown five-foot wide sidewalks along the frontage of the entire development with sidewalks already existing along East Main Street. Setbacks for single-family attached units in RO are ten feet in the front, eight feet on the side for end units, eighteen feet on the side adjacent to a street, and twenty-five feet in the rear. This is correctly noted on the plat. Lot sizes in RO for single-family attach are a minimum of three thousand square feet per lot. The smallest lot currently proposed is three thousand and twenty-five square feet, and the largest being nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square, square feet with an average lot size of five thousand six hundred and seventy-seven square feet. Staff believes MJSR 22-03 Elizabeth Towns complies with all aspects of the subdivision and minimum design standards ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimously made a favorable recommendation to city council to approve MJSR 22-03. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How many parking on Grant does that area allow?
So it's this indentured section right here. Based on measuring that out, it would serve roughly eight vehicles of, of on-street parking.
And what do we consider improved road?
So an improved road, improved road would be a paved street. Uh, the, the required minimum for fire rapid access is twenty feet wide. Uh, if it were, you know, being built as a new street, it would have to be twenty-six foot wide with curb and gutter. But Grant Street is an existing public street, albeit currently gravel.
I still don't see how two cars can go through Grant Street even with, even with a twenty-foot wide. I mean, I went through there just to see what that road was like the other day, and my truck practically took up the whole road.
Yeah, and I mean, twenty, twenty feet is, is, I mean, especially when you're going twenty-five miles per hour, it should be sufficient. Those are ten-foot wide lanes. Technically, you can do it with eighteen. Anderson, uh, Street, uh, we got several eighteen-foot wide streets, but, uh, right now, that other section of Grant is, uh, coming in here is, is not sufficient for two vehicles, really. But they are going to be taking this entire portion right here that is unpaved, paving that to twenty, so that, that part at least should be, uh, much more maneuverable now.
How wide is it, the area where the parking is?
That's going to be, that's this right here, so this is all going to be improved to twenty feet, and then parking will be off of that.
So we're looking at twenty-six at least?
Yeah, twenty-six to twenty-seven, in that section there where the parking is, yeah. Probably twenty-seven to the curb.
Counsel?
These are townhomes. Is this, the, and I know this is, and I almost don't want to ask this because it really has nothing to do with it directly, but I'm inquiring minds want to know. Are these rentals, or the, or do you all know that? I'm just looking at the close proximity to Pfeiffer and that piece of property. Are these going to be houses that people will buy to live in, or are they? I mean, I'm just, if you all know that.
Uh, and developers are here, they can answer that. But I mean, it's, it's, as far as I know, with everything that's been done with the other, uh, projects they've done and other townhomes like this, they're going to be, be simple lots, so anybody can buy, you know, any of these that they want to individually. I would think, I, I would think that you're probably going to have a lot of people buying them and then renting them out to students.
Well, that, I mean, I, yeah.
Because it's right there.
I mean, it's literally right there.
Yeah, I think, and I think it's, it's, it's good housing that we need to have.
Right.
Close in the five points right now, yeah.
Okay, just ask.
But I can't, I mean, I, I don't think anybody can guarantee that.
No, I understand. I just, I, inquiring minds want to know.
Sure.
Further questions?
There would be a homeowner association with this that would govern all the...
It's got an HOA right here.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any, this may not even be placed for this. The design of those, would those be similar to the architecture around, or do we know yet? Is that...
We don't have any kind of planning like that. I haven't seen the, the building, the design of those.
Would somebody look at that at some point?
Yeah, it's not something we really consider with the subdivisions.
Yeah, I know.
A good question, it's something that, you know, that, you know, they maybe will provide you, but I don't know anything about it.
Right, not at this point.
So Kevin, to clarify, Grant Street will be paved, is that correct?
The, the portion of Grant Street right here that is unpaved, which goes all the way up here to Ruby Street, is going to be paved at twenty feet. And then down here, off of that twenty feet, you will have a, a section for, for on-street parking there.
Okay.
So you should be able to get two vehicles free and clear all the way up here to Ruby Street.
And what is our normal size of a city street?
Uh, new city streets for local streets are twenty-six foot minimum. We do allow twenty feet if you're doing an alley or something like that, or you're extending, you know, a, 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 a substandard street.
We can make this wider, I guess, is that correct?
Well, it's, it's, the problem is the right-of-way that's there right now is, is very narrow. Um, and they're actually going to have to, uh, create probably an easement over, either extend the right-of-way or create an easement over some of this sidewalk that exists just to get it in there. So, and I, I, I think, honestly, I think twenty feet on this, especially with some of the parking being off of the road there, I think is going to, it's going to function, it's going to function pretty well. It's definitely going to be an upgrade to what is there right now. So it's, a lot of these streets, it's, it's, you're not going to get it perfect. You're trying to kind of infill and kind of trying to dismantle the situation better.
Kevin, how many, oh, sorry. How many, how many parking spaces per resident, per residence?
We don't, we don't require it.
I'm talking about, are they going to have, are they going to have like garage and then driveway right behind it, or what?
I, I believe this is the same design as before where there would be a one-car garage and then a space for one car in front there, so there'd be two vehicles for every unit, two spaces for two vehicles for every unit.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering if that...
Correct, okay.
I'm just wondering where that, the gravel portion where these houses would be on Grant Street, I'm just wondering for that little small portion, should we consider like a one-way, um, one-way entrance there?
Uh, I, I, I don't, I don't think you need, uh, one-way here, uh, you're gonna have twenty feet of width right there, which is, which is plenty for two vehicles to pass each other, especially at low speeds like that. Um, and this section of Grant up here has been in existence for, it, it, there is no one-way there right now, it's two-way. It, it's definitely very difficult to manage at that, but, um, you would be putting that on an existing neighborhood, so that's, that's up to y'all, up to your call.
I'm glad you're a professional, because I don't see it, I'm gonna trust you on this.
It's, it's, it's very difficult to pass two vehicles there, I do think it needs to be upgraded eventually, um, I just, I thought it was probably a little bit out of the scope of this project.
Right. So two questions, um, bring, bring that, uh, bring your visual down some, and show me on there where Elizabeth Heights is right now.
Uh, it's right here, all this, right here, this parcel.
So it's across the street from Elizabeth Heights?
Mm-hmm.
I was completely mixed up.
And then these are those apartments, those two kind of long apartments right there that are on the corner.
I was, okay.
It is a very, it's very, it's, it's actually three properties that run under the same ownership, a very odd-shaped property. Um, we've, we've worked with developers a good bit on this to try to get something that, that would work here. Um, there's a lot of road frontage, but it's, there's a lot of land you just don't have too much with, unfortunately.
So go back over to the question about Grant Street, and I, I know that we've got to make sure we can get emergency vehicles in there, and you're saying that twenty-foot wide is wide enough.
Twenty feet meets the Fire Marshal standards, uh, that's the minimum standard on, on.
Even if they, even if they have folks parking on the street?
Uh, yes, because you'd be able to get vehicles, you'd be able to get vehicles around, um, around, that, those are not gonna be in the street, they're gonna be, it's on-street parking, but it's not on the street specifically, it's out of the right-of-way.
So the second question, and I may be completely ignorant by asking this, I see that the proposed public sanitary, the right-of-way, the sewer right-of-way, I see where that is on the right hand.
Mm-hmm.
Is, this really may be crazy, is there a way that the whole prop, that property could shift to the left to where that road could be wider through there, that little part of Grant, or am I completely, have lost my mind? Because I'm just like Mr. Townsend about that width.
It, it, it could be, I mean, it, it, it could be, it is possible, um, it's gonna be a lot of extra street, um. Um, I, honestly, I mean, I, you know, the thing is, the, the thing I think with this is, is if you keep the on-street parking to a minimum, you keep it off of right here, you have it right here, and you try to keep it off here, the twenty feet is gonna be, the twenty feet there with no on-street parking is gonna function probably better than what you've got right now on some of our streets downtown that are thirty feet wide, where you have vehicles parked on either side, you can only get one vehicle through. Because you'll have two cleared lanes to pass each other with.
There's plenty of width on Elizabeth and Heath to allow on-street parking with that new curb cut. Because we make them do that, they could, we could get a little bit of on-street parking there.
Potentially, but you're gonna be narrowing your, your twenty feet, your substandard street down.
Elizabeth is much more than, Elizabeth much more than.
I think it's only twenty, if I'm not mistaken.
Elizabeth's much more.
Right-of-way is thirty feet wide on Elizabeth, and the street width is twenty feet, and there's curbing on one side and there's natural ditch on the other.
Now, they do park right now near Elizabeth Heights, I think there are some vehicles, there was vehicles there today that were parked right there, so, um, and I, I haven't tried to pass anybody right there, I'm not sure how, how difficult it is, but.
Uh, that, that answered my question, I was wondering if with the new curb cut ordinance, if it would change the on-street parking from what we're seeing here.
Um, it will conceivably give you the width of space for smaller vehicles in front, um, and, you know, probably one every two units or so. Um, it's not gonna give you the extra street width that you need. You had a twenty-six-foot wide road, no problem, um, with this right now with twenty, twenty feet of space right there, it doesn't really matter,
Yeah.
you know, how much width in front of those units you, you get.
All right.
Just to add to the, to the current conditions of the site, I went out and actually visited the site on Grant Street, I took the F-250 down there. There's only enough, currently enough width on Grant Street to allow for one vehicle. Both sides of trucks were actually coming off the gravel, and I will offer that the street coming from Ruby heading towards East Main is an eighteen-foot wide street. The right-of-way is still, uh, twenty-five feet wide, so it's still under that twenty-foot requirement, but there were vehicles parked on that section of Grant Street. And I, just, this is opinionated, but the street would be widened through the Ruby, the Elizabeth section is twenty feet wide. It would be a significant improvement to, to what's currently there for the neighborhood.
And is that, is that gravel there?
Sorry?
Is that currently gravel there?
The, the section from Elizabeth Avenue to Ruby Street is all gravel.
Just this section right here that they're going to install twenty-foot, oop, twenty-foot street on is gravel. I think it ends, the gravel ends right about here, right after you pull off Ruby.
And then from Ruby to East Main, it doesn't quite connect, but it is all paved from that point on. The only section of Grant Street that is currently gravel is the section to be developed right now.
Further comments, questions? Anyone else here to speak? Mr. Tibbs, you were available if needed, did you want to speak? All right. Counsel?
Yeah, I do, going back nine, ten years ago, I think we would have, what we heard was that you guys don't work with anybody.
Mm-hmm.
And it's so hard to do business with the city of Albemarle. We've come a long way, and we don't always make the right decision initially, but ultimately, with the information and what you folks are doing to help us along, we're making some good decisions. I think the people that are coming in to look at our city are more comfortable with our planning and zoning, they're more comfortable with us being able to make good logical decisions, and, and I certainly appreciate what y'all are doing, I appreciate what you guys are doing. Uh, it's just gonna enhance our city, we can't be perfect, I wish we could, but we can't, we gotta work with what we have.
We don't have to set a public hearing for this.
No, this is just providing the provenance of the.
And, and I guess the comment that I would make is that lately, everything that we do, that we as a city do, I'm thinking about what's down at Five Points, I'm thinking about the hundred and forty-five students we have down there right now. And I have by looking at where they are living, a, a lot of them, to people's surprise, a lot of them are living right here in Albemarle. I know, because I've seen where, I've seen their addresses where they're living.
Yeah, I think we need to update that survey that we did last time, because I think the numbers have gone up.
I think they have too, I mean.
People walking down the neighborhood streets from there with books and stuff.
That's right, so we have a lot more living here, but they've got, I mean, they've got three more classes to start this calendar year between the two programs, and there's gotta be places for those students to live, so.
Absolutely.
Um, I just, I have to say that, because I have to look at every, I, I personally look at things right now through Piper Eyes.
Yes, sir. Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve twenty-two oh three, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, you have before you, the addition was a, Kendall's Church is requesting a adjustment in their water due to a leak, the leak has been repaired. This is outside of staff's purview, so they need council to act on this rather than staff. Mr. Ferris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, if I can add to it, um, as the mayor said, is outside of our utility adjustment policy, which only allows this type of adjustment for commercial uses, so the church is not a commercial use. Uh, this handout is two-sided, uh, if you look at the side with the utility bill, when the request came in, they've actually circled, uh, the request has actually circled the two months. So I'm assuming they may be desiring two months of utility billing adjustment. So this is outside our policy, council can obviously just uphold the policy, turn it down, if council wanted to grant, uh, an adjustment, uh, if they were doing an adjustment similar to the residential policy, it would be for one month, which, you know, then the applicant would surely choose the highest adjustment month. But since they circled two months as if they were seeking two months adjustments, there are two months calculated on the, uh, backside of this sheet. So if you wanted to do one month, uh, the bill that was due in, uh, billing date, uh, January nineteenth is a hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-two cents. That is the highest of the two adjustments that would be made, uh, the lower is twenty-five eighty-nine. Again, so if you wanted to do, you know, anything from denied to approve one or both, but I wanted to point that out. If it went, uh, similar to a residential adjustment, it would just be the one month.
Question, so if this, and this is not being stupid, it's just a question, if it's not residential, but it's not commercial, I mean, I know that churches are nonprofits, what, how are they?
Anything that's non-residential.
So, non-residential?
Right.
But this is not commercial, it's just not, it's not non-residential. So if I'm looking at this correct, the, uh, we usually have to do some sewage, but they don't have sewer on this one, it's just water.
Right, they're up on Kendall's Valley, so they don't have any city sewer.
So if we did both of them, it would be one ninety-five, almost, one ninety-six thirty-nine, is that right?
Correct.
Is that half of the amount over the average?
That's correct, so the way the adjustment, so, right, the way the adjustment is calculated, you take their average bill over the last twelve months, we calculate the average bill over the last twelve months, and then to calculate the adjustment, everything over the adjust, everything over the average, uh, the adjustment would be half of that average. Basically, a cost-sharing arrangement with the city, the city would eat half, the, um, applicant would get the benefit of half.
This, Greg Underwood gave me a call on this last week and asked what they could do, and I just suggested that they get six months plus, uh, water bills and bring it to the city and then let, and then bring it to us. I look at churches as being different.
Me too.
And that, uh, one, they, they've suffered through COVID, um, for a lot, well, two years probably, so financially, one would have to gather that things may not be as, as good in the collection area as they would normally be. And I, I, I would make a motion that we give them everything that they're, they're due and, uh, do both.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dry to do one ninety-six thirty-nine, I have a second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion?
Just, just, okay, let's, let me, let's, let's clarify, uh, is, is the total that circled the three sixty-nine forty-six? Or the ones, uh, the one seventy fifty-two?
Okay, so if you, if you look at the back, uh, the side that had, okay, so the side, it's not the bill, uh, there's a line that says adjustment to be made.
Right.
One says twenty-five eighty-nine, that's one month of average, that would be one month of adjustment, and then going straight to the right, there's one seventy fifty-two, if you add those two together, that would be the adjustment for our, if it was, if our policy was applied, those two added together.
That's the two months, I took that's what you were saying, to do the two months.
So let me ask you something.
Yeah, I'm gonna withdraw that, I'm sure we can get some more discussion.
So I, let me ask something following Benton's question, so if, where is a normal, I mean, I know you do the calculation and, and we split the difference, okay? Are they saying that that eighty-twenty, that was, that was different too, I mean, that was more, that looked to be like probably, is it, was it fifty dollars more, you think?
Right, so if you look at that eighty-twenty, uh, that would, that was their bill, that was their water bill for that month.
Right.
Right below it, water amount average, twenty-eight forty-three, that's the twelve-month average.
Okay.
That's why it's the same going across.
So, so hang tight to that, so with that said, that the month bill for January was about three hundred and, well, it would have been three hundred and forty dollars over if half of it was one seventy.
Yeah.
So I'm like you, do, if we look at attendance at churches during COVID and people noticing or not noticing water leaks, I mean, I could see that, I would be more apt to do, if their average water bill, Benton, is twenty-eight forty-three, even giving them a hundred and seventy is not really helping them a lot, it's helping them just a little bit, so.
Right, remember, part of the, it, it may be obvious to everyone, I just want to point it out, that part of their total bill, they, they have, they're electric customers as well.
Right, right.
There's electric on there as well.
But, but on the back, it's just water, that three sixty-nine is just water.
Right.
And that three sixty-nine is usually, in an average month, twenty-eight forty-three.
They use the same amount.
So.
Twenty-eight point forty-three.
I'd move that we make it, that we, that we pay three hundred, that we give them a three hundred dollar credit total.
Yeah, I agree.
A three hundred dollar credit. A credit.
I have a motion by Councilmember Howard to do an adjustment, three hundred dollars, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Do we, I do have a question, do we, normally we would receive some documentation that the leak has been fixed?
Yeah, I, we, we've got that documentation, it's, it's been fixed, yeah, they, they, and it was done by a plumber for our, everything's for our policy in that regards.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, still leaking.
Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
Uh, don't believe I have anything to add.
Ms. Townsend?
Uh, nothing.
Ms. Hughes?
Um, just, just a couple of quick things, um, I know we talked about the business, or the reports from the departments, but I just would like to comment on the public utilities, um, I thought the reporting on that was excellent. Um, the information that's given, it's usable, it's easy to understand, it's presented in a very functional way. And I know there's a lot of information y'all give to us, so the easier you can make it for our brains to digest, the better. So I just would like to comment on how, um, well that was done. Um, the signage at Rock Creek Park, I know we've seen a lot of that in the social media, um, and I appreciate all that out there. I've gotten very positive comments, um, from our citizens, I did have a couple of questions. There's a sign, um, in front of GHA, I think on a pole, one of the wayfinding signs, and it's, it's not centered, it's, it's off-centered. Is that something, it doesn't look right, I guess.
If you center it, every truck is gonna bend it and carry it up, that's the reason they had to do that, keep vehicles from hitting it.
Well, the actual sign on the pole is to the right, it's just off-centered, so that.
That's the reason it had to be done.
That's why they're done that way, okay. And it, it looks on the back of the, it, I mean, it looks like it's put up with, I know it's probably not, it looks like zip ties. What, what actually puts those signs up, what's holding those signs on the pole, do we know? It's a metal band that's on there. I mean, it looks like a zip tie, but, okay, okay, okay. Um, I think the signs are looking really, really, really good, and one other question or comment, I guess, um, as I came back into town on twenty-four twenty-seven from the lake today, I noticed they're putting in the sidewalk on part of that areas, we get close, close to the ci, or in the city. The amount of the sidewalk versus where the road is, I mean, there's, there's, there's hardly any quote grassy area. I mean, I guess we, they couldn't have, is that DOT that couldn't have moved it over any further away from, that, that is the twenty, that's twenty-four twenty-seven. That's gonna be.
That's DOT specification.
You're not gonna feel real comfortable walking down that road, that sidewalk, that close to that main highway. I mean, I wish they could have given us some more green space between the sidewalk and the road, it's just, it's really close. Uh, that, that's, that's, that's a little nerve-wracking, but anyway, that's it.
Ms. Louder?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Louder? Ms. Paul?
Um, continuing on the atta boys, the pickleball courts at Rock Creek. Um, at the YMCA on a regular basis, people tell me good stuff and they tell me stuff that's not good. They are thrilled to death about the pickleball, and they are thrilled, they said, you just wait till the weather gets better. So atta boy to Parks and Rec and to the city for designating that. Um, I was told that we might not have a lot of players down there right now, but wait till the weather gets better and they'll be fighting for them, so. Where are they playing yesterday? Um, and back to the city way, the wayfinding signs, um, again, somebody at the Y said to me, why is it that some say, for instance, the Neighborhood Theater, some say Albemarle Neighborhood Theater, and some just say Neighborhood Theater, so all the signs are not being congruent. They love the wayfinding signs, but the congruence of them, of what they're saying is not necessarily the same. Again, you just take people what they have to say, um. It, uh, so, um, Mr. Ferris, you're gonna find out when that meeting is for retail strategy?
Yes, I'm not sure if it's, uh, you know, they'll have some public input sessions, but they'll also have a few staff follow-up meetings too, so I'm not sure what that one is.
It's the public in, I have been asked, when are the public input, because that's what people, folks are wanting to know about. Um, and Kevin, um, I'm not picking on you, but, you know, listen, you all, you have the Kevin Show, which is great every week. Again, at the Y this morning, I got asked about a certain piece of property, when is it coming down? And it's one of the ones on our commercial list, um, particularly the piece of property out. And it's one of the ones on our commercial list, um, particularly the piece of property out at State Road and seven forty. So, um, so if we can have, if we can have presented to us so that the folks out there that watch it can know that we're, you know, the hands of, hands of justice run slowly is what I said, but. Okay. Gotcha. I just, I'm just, I'm just the spokesman for the folks that say things to me. I know, me too. Atta boy again to the Special Events Committee that met last Wednesday. And to that end, I sent council an email that said, if you know of anybody that would like to help sponsor any of our events this summer, please get that information or get the information that Lisa has sent to them. Those will start before our next meeting, actually. They'll start on March the third, fourth, fourth, food truck Friday, March the fourth, Friday, March the fourth. There will not be music, yeah, that's right. But, um, we won't have, um, music that night, but, uh, they will start that night. And some other things I'll give to Michael, not, not necessarily for council.
Mr. Dry?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to have council indulgence in the audience for just a few moments to clarify some things, if I may. We see a lot of neat stuff coming our way. We see all these developments coming in and it's talking infrastructure and it's going to do this. We got roads, we got sewer, we got stormwater. And I've thought about it, and the one thing we haven't discussed or thought about, at least I haven't heard it, are the children. What are we going to do for the kids? Every, we got four thousand homes coming in, I don't know what the average household is, two-point-one or three-point-two or whatever. But there's going to be a need for our parks and recreation, uh, there's going to be a tidal wave coming here before long. And.
Oh, my.
Our future for these kids lie in brick and mortar. This was taken from the old Cottonville, the actual warehouse where the cotton was stored down at West Cassett, nineteen acres. We talked about it years ago and it got about as far as, I can throw this brick a hell of a lot further than where we got. But I, I think this is going to be something that is going to be necessary for our community, necessary for our young people who are going to be more and more active in, in athletics outside the public, public or even private school system. If you go anywhere around here, and especially to the west, uh, Charlotte, Concord, you don't go many miles before you start to see field after field after field after field. And they're full, from lacrosse to football, it's just amazing what I see my grandchildren involved with. Lisa, I want to give this to you. When this thing, I'm not going to see it, I'm not going to be here. I feel pretty damn certain about that. However, you may not be either, but I want you to pass this to somebody. When this thing is built, I want this in the cornerstone of the sign that goes out. And I've got about sixty more, plus flooring, plus angle iron, that I took away from that building. But th, this is something that we're going to have to discuss, we're going to have to take it and we're going to have to really make this a priority as we go down the road. And I'll work with you. I talked with Toby Thorpe the other day, he's excited that it's, that I was talking about it again. And it's time to be planning, thinking, what can we do, how do we do it? And let's, let's, don't let this thing die before. Thank you.
Anything further? I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina Dental Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, three, and six, for consulting with attorney and personnel. Motion by Councilmember Louder, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. Get back into regular session. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming out of closed session, I have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until our next regular scheduled meeting on March the seventh at six-thirty. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All in favor say aye? Those opposed? Motion carries.